Let's call the meeting to order. Everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor. The council provided a revised agenda prior to the meeting that added two items under consent. Item Captain G, the first point being approving an amendment to the first agreement for the 641 means true, and the second one being adopting Resolution 2126.
Approving use of the city logo.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
It's a motion by Kate, seconded by Bryce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. We have a presentation.
Unified Transit. We have Mr. Craig Jensen from Scott County down here today to give us a presentation on the Unified Transit Management Plan. This is an item that council has some from the area with based on the reports from council member Timberman and me, Mr. Mayor, as well as presentation for those of you that were at last month's steel meeting.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Craig Jensen, again, Transportation Planning Manager with Scott County. It's good to be here in person instead of a Zoom meeting and trying to figure that out. Yeah, we're here to talk about the U T M P. And a little history of U T M P, or Unified Transit Management Plan, is that in 2005 was the first plan that we had for transit in the county. It was a plan that was, you know, set the vision for basically a number of things, but also growing transit and growing the park and rides that we have established now in Shakopee, Marshall Road Transit Station, and really better service for transit in the county for those commuters. And so it's been almost 15 years, and beginning in 2019 through scale, it was thought, let's, we completed a lot of goals of the U T M P, let's start looking at another vision for the next 10, 15 years. So the summer of 2019, we created a steering committee. There were members from each community on that, and we really kind of kicked off the whole plan. And we had a lot of good discussion through the development of our meetings where it was a lot of education for those members on it, trying to get an understanding of transit and what's really the future of transit, or at least we thought we knew what the future of transit was. So we got to a point where we developed some goals, we really wanted to understand it, we wanted to make sure if there was expansion, that it was really strategic in places. And, you know, it's really one of those things where there were needs for both employees and employers for transit. So March of 2020 brought a little bit of a change to how we do things. And you can see the lower left-hand corner is, the orange line is 2019 for MBTA ridership, and the green line below that is 2020 ridership. You see that big dip in March.
And that was mostly due to the commuter routes that were going to downtown in the county, and now with MBTA ridership overall, and that's just 2020.
The upper right-hand corner is the Transit Link, our dial ride service, and that's a month-by-month comparison of 2019 to 2020. And that shows again in March that big dip. But one thing I want to point out is that it's, it really levels off. I mean, there's a large drop, but it levels off. And really, what it goes to show is that those people that are dependent on transit for their mobility are the ones that are continuing to use it. Even when, you know, Transit Link was reduced to only a couple riders on a bus, there was still those trips being generated.
So summer 2020, once we tried to, you know, figure out how to navigate through the COVID world, we started to plan back up, at least digging into a lot of the stuff that we had talked about in the previous year. We developed a number of chapters, we hit the gamut from land use to really what's new technology out there available to us. And I'm here to just a little talk about what, you know, what does it mean to Elko New Market and what is in this plan for Elko New Market. Being, not being in the transit taxing district, it has some limitations, but there is transit available. There's a dial ride service provided by the county. And there's, when people are not able to get those rides, our transit folks try to look for volunteer drivers to kind of fill those needs as well. And then I think you may have received a presentation on the Hopscot Service, the pan sharing program. That is something new and started, and that really came out of a lot of the discussion here about the need to try to grow, not grow transit, but provide service for those who have those mobility needs. And then really the other thing is that there are those park and rides. There are, every couple of years, and that comes with park and ride surveys, and there are residents from Elko New Market area that have used primarily the park and rides on 35 in Lakeville and Burnsville.
And so out of this, we developed some recommendations that, you know, kind of reflect, reflect the area, and I'm just hitting on a few of these here. It's the, again, the mobility for kind of the rural area and some of the cities that are not in the transit taxing district, trying to, trying to find inventive ways to provide additional service, like the Hopscot Program. And then, you know, is there opportunities for something like Uber and Lyft? That doesn't have a big presence in Scott County today, but this is something that, you know, some areas have been looking at for those private public partnerships to see if maybe there's something that those can, you know, supplement some of the service that, you know, the public provides, or, you know, potentially replace some of the services as well. And then one thing that to note is that we looked at future park and ride locations, at least doing the planning, and we recommend doing the planning and thinking about where some of those could be. And in the plan, we identify the 2 and 35 location as potential, if there's opportunity for something to come up. And one thing that we had, you know, looked at was the inner-city bus, or actually Northfield Express. So pre-COVID, Northfield ran three buses north and three buses south, right, you know, right past Elko New Market. Can, is there a way we can try to work with them, you know, once we kind of understand the COVID implications to try to maybe, if there is that potential for stopping along 35 at, you know, through, whether it's a shared lot or, you know, we actually go and inquire something, you know, maybe there's opportunity to implement some stop or service through working with a partnership with Northfield Express. And then one recommendation that came out of it is the steering committee will really want to, you know, stay engaged in transportation, not just transit, but transportation and even economic development, how that provides, you know, the options for, you know, for growth in the county. So we would look to have a continuation of advisory committee through scale on transportation that meets maybe quarterly, but is yet to be developed right now. Just big picture takeaways I want to hit on is the, we are growing, we continue to grow, and as we grow, we will increase the number of people that have mobility needs in the county. We will be getting older, all projections show that, that as a county as a whole will be getting a little, little older. And we really want to increase the quality of life for people and, you know, what are some things we can do through those services to do that? And this is really opportunity-driven plan. This isn't the aggressive plan of 15 years ago. This is a plan of, you know, what can we do to better transit or at least improve the efficiency of transit? So, next steps, we would go, we've been going to every city. We would like to propose a resolution, maybe in the next month or so, that we have the city adopt supporting the plan, or at least accepting the plan. We would then go to the county board, and then, you know, we want to start up that committee. So really, that's, just wanted to keep this short and introduce it to folks that may not have been aware of it.
Does anyone have any questions?
This is awesome.
Yeah.
There's such a need, so it's huge.
We appreciate the presentation. This was good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm just going to get set up for the next presentation.
I saw someone out in the lobby kind of poking their head in.
George?
I don't know if it's something.
It looks like they signed in.
While you're doing that, I'm going to just call for public comment, because I don't see a lot in the audience of potential public commentators. Does anyone care to address the council for anything under public comment? Come once, twice? All right, public comments closed. Onto consent agenda. Does anyone have any items on consent that they want polled or had a quick question about?
Or approve consent agenda?
Should I be? Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
That's 5-0. Consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll get into general business.
First item under general business, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is the award sale bonds for the Series 2021A bonds that were, sale occurred this morning at 10:00 a.m. We have Doug Green from Baker Tilly here. Terry was unable, unavailable this evening, so Doug is pinch-hitting for her this evening. Doug has also been assigned as Terry's backup going forward as part of a succession plan with regards to their representation to the city. Doug?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Doug Green, Baker Tilly. Nice to be here. Bless having here 10, 11 years ago, maybe. So good to be back. As Tom mentioned, this morning at 10:00 a.m., we took bids on behalf of the city and happy to report that we had an excellent sale. I know what an important project this is, an exciting project this is for the city. This is just one piece, certainly a big piece of it. So, we did have a successful sale. Here on the left, you see the number of bids. We went to market with 4.2 million. I won't get into the details, because I know you have been, you're very familiar with this project and all the improvements that are going to be made. So we went to market with 4.2 million dollars. The winning bidder was F H N Capital Markets, not a household name, but a very big and very good underwriter out of Memphis. They, their clients are all types of clients, but primarily, I would think, these got sold to, these bonds got resold to banks into trust departments, big trust departments, because these were good-sized, good-sized bonds. You can see that the winning bid was 1.62, which is, you know, over 20 years, the average life was 10 years, so that's a, that's a better indication of maturity. So 1.6 over average life of 10 years, but amortized over 20 years is very low cost of capital, which we're good to see. You see there's very little difference between the top four. That's good, just because they obviously know where the market is. So we know we got, you know, a market rate, certainly when it's that close with four big underwriters. On the right, I believe you issued bonds last year, so this might sound familiar, but this happens every single time, especially in this low interest rate environment, is that you get premium pricing. And we offer underwriters flexibility to bid certain ways. We tell them how much we need to meet our needs, and I'll start at the far right. We said we needed, you know, about 4.2 million dollars to pay for these improvements and financing costs. But then, within that, we give them some flexibility to meet their needs as well. And so what they do is they bid a premium up all the way through, looks like 2039, yeah, 2039 and 2041 was at par. Actually, it looks like that 2036 maturity was, well, right at par. So that simply means, it's a lot of bond math, that simply means they paid more than 100% for these bonds, but in exchange of, the city will pay the higher coupons. At the end of the day, it's a wash to the city, but it certainly meets their needs. So there's a re-offering premium of $226,000. And so we don't need that money to fund our, fund our projects, so we use that to reduce the par amount of the bonds. So went to, went to the market with 4.2 million, but ended up selling $3,965,000 in bonds. And here, even though there were some, you saw some term bonds in there, and they combined some, some of those serial maturities, the city still pays level principal and interest, equal annual principal and interest each year. So that helps the city manage its, there's a small debt service levy here, but utility primarily paid for with utility funds, so helps manage the utility rates. We really did hit the market at a good time. You know, municipal rates tend to, all the credit markets follow the treasuries, and the municipal market follows the U.S. Treasuries as well. Sometimes it performs better, sometimes it performs worse. But right now, it's just on a run of about four months of really outperforming the treasury market. So what that means is while you might have seen treasury rates start to go up a little bit, municipal rates have stayed the same, and we really benefited from that. So what you have here is a five-year look of a, it's called the Bond Buyer Index, it's just one of the, one of the main municipal bond indices out there in the market. The red line is general obligation with the city sold, and the green is revenue bonds without that general obligation. These are 20-year maturities, so not complete apples-apples, but it does give, it's one of the best indications of where overall the municipal market is. And you can see over the last five years, you know, it's kind of at, almost at its low point. And if you were to go back 50, 40 years, that would be its low point as well. So again, hit the market at a very, very good time. And one of the reasons hitting the market at a good time is luck, what's not luck is the city's outstanding credit rating. And that, along with the ability to put a general obligation backing with this growing property tax base, it's a pretty secure investment. So with every bond issue, there is a new credit rating, and the city's credit rating was affirmed at AA+. Probably know that's just one below, you know, AAA, the highest, which is just, allows the city to borrow at very low rates. They have six factors. The economy, none of these will be surprise to you, I'll go through these quickly, you know, talks about the broad and diverse economy and the growing tax base. If there's lots of homes being built out here, that certainly helps. The effective buying income, that's kind of similar to per capita income, is above national average. The management, very clear, just very strong financial policies and practices in place. And year after year, you hit your budget, you hit your budget, you have a little surplus, don't have these wide swings one way or the other. So just solid financial management and governance on your part, and it's evident as, you know, as they look from year to year. The same thing, that's the same thing with the budget performance leads into that management. Budget flexibility is the fund balance primarily in the general fund and the capital funds, so those non, those governmental funds. And then liquidity brings in the cash in your enterprise funds, in the primary, the water and sewer, you can just, strong cash position. And then looking at debt, with every Minnesota city, you're comparing to all municipalities throughout the country, Minnesota cities have higher debt, and that's simply because they have the authority to borrow more without going through a referendum. And so, and the ability to have general obligation backing. So when you have that ability to borrow at such low rates without a referendum, you tend to finance your projects that way, whereas the rest of the country, a lot of the country doesn't have that. So in the end, you have, you know, higher debt ratios compared to the rest of the country, but that's the same with just about every Minnesota city. Yes, sir?
What would be considered, like, how out of proportion are we to that?
Oh, to the, to the, to the country? So the, you know, I-
Well, just in general, when you say that we have higher than average debt, and that's pretty typical of cities, which I-
Right.
Is there, is there, is there a ratio that-
There are-
Would be considered normal that we're way above?
There are ratios. I can't say them off the top of my head, but I can put you in a range, right? So it's all a matter of, people use these things like debt per capita or debt per market value. I mean, that's one indication. To me, the best one is how much of your debt services, how much of your, what percentage your budget is being paid for with debt, with debt service? And the way they calculate it, yours is 15%. That's not uncommon for Minnesota cities. I don't know what, like, the NASH, I could easily find that out, now I'm curious. I'll have to go back and look. You go back and look at AA+ cities throughout the country, and, you know, it, I don't know, it could be five, you know, 5% to 10%, just because of that reason we talked about before. I don't know what that number is, but it's probably somewhere in there.
Fair enough. Thanks.
So that's really it. Good rates, really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and to watch this project move ahead.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
So the council will be asked to adopt Resolution 2125, authorizing issuance of award sale, prescribing the form and details of providing subpoena of the general obligation bonds, Series 2021A. I believe Linda put out through the final version, the copy that was provided in the past that was a template. The version you have has been adjusted for the final sale of these picks.
So moved?
It's a motion by Kate. Second? Second by Bryce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is community survey. This is a continuous discussion from the council that I found the April 8 meeting, continuing until we had a full council present, because there was some lack of consensus on this particular issue. Staff, they provide a revised memo based on request of a number of council people to provide additional information regarding how, examples of how the community survey has been used in the past. I won't go through all of it, just wanted to point out that the community survey is a commonly used tool by communities to engage the community, inform strategic planning, budget, and allocate resources, and also measure performance. It is consistent with our community-oriented local government philosophy, specifically the community involvement, problem-solving, and performance measurement components of that. It should be noted that surveys are not a standalone tool. It was noted in the previous discussion, and correctly so, that other forms of feedback, such as contact by council members of the public through emails, phone calls, gatherings, one-on-one conversations, front-counter contact or field contact by staff, commentary on social media, are all means and valuable methods of communication and collecting information from the community. But it should be noted that those methods only access potentially a limited cross-section of the community, and they're also limited to an individual sphere socially or professionally. Furthermore, the majority of the feedback is more likely to be from those who feel strongly on a topic positively or negatively, and so we talk about the silent majority, who may not necessarily take the time to comment on it. Community surveys are intended to supplement those other means, feedback by getting a broader and more representative cross-section, getting feedback from that silent majority, and it helps provide context to the other feedback that's being provided to either identify whether that feedback is representative of the broader community, or if it's maybe possibly a minority, et cetera. It also complies, the survey is also complies with the 2010 state legislation related to performance measurement and our compliance with that program. Other things that you might say are fringe benefits or other benefits of doing the survey is areas of exceptionally high ratings, such as customer service for us, policing, snowplowing, recreation, cultural and civic events, provide a positive influence on the morale and services, and serves as a motivator for performance for our employees. It promotes positive results, reinforce the public perception of the value of the services that they receive, and the quality of life they have, and confidence in policy and decision-makers. There's a reason your insurance company reminds you that they're highly rated, correct? They want to keep you as a customer, but they want you to take pride in that you made the right decision in regards to it. And then also communicating changes that you've made based on the survey helps communicate back to the community that we're engaging them, that we're listening to them, and we're being responsive, and that also promotes confidence in their policy and decision-makers. The survey that we're proposing is based on proposal from Morris Leatherman Company, who conducted our three previous ones. They were the most cost-effective proposal that we received. The proposal includes providing frequencies of the question responses, the volume of cross-tabulations. Analysis of the survey results would include things like trend analysis compared to the city's previous surveys, imperative analysis on a metro, exurban, and state-level basis, and reporting statistically significant differences between demographics groups, basically looking at cross-tabbing and seeing if there's any strong commonalities, who's answering in what ways. It would include, of course, the executive summary and then graphics to present the information to make it more absorbable or user-friendly when it's applicable. We assume the expense for this in our 2021 budget to come out of professional services. And the survey's been conducted on a three-year cycle, and over that three-year cycle, we do receive that reimbursement through the state performance program, $600 per year, approximately $1,800. So annualized cost of the survey is $2,067 approximately. So basically, the question, the council being asked is, one, is it worth it? Are you receiving the benefit from the survey to justify this expense of public dollars? And then, do you want to add additional topics? The current scope of proposal reflects previous surveys, however, we can add an additional expense, add additional topic areas at an expense of $150 per question. So if you want to do it, are there additional topic areas that you would like to add to the survey? Staff would recommend continuing to keep the existing information, we feel they're all valuable, and provide baseline and trend measurements in those areas. But this is a good opportunity to solicit feedback from the community in other areas that might be more timely, or that we haven't in the past felt were as important enough to justify the expense of including in the survey. Any questions?
Go back to that annual cost of 2,067.
Yep.
How do you come up with that?
Cost of the survey is $8,000.
Yep.
We do it every three years. Over the last three years, we've received $1,800.
Oh, got it. So what, okay.
Yep. So the value of the survey is more than just the single year, so if you were to break it on that annual value, or the annual cost of it, broken over the three-year period, it would break, it would go up to a little over $2,000.
So, well, before I start talking, anyone have any questions?
All right, so to kind of pick up from where we left off, this was one of the more interesting discussions, debates that Josh and I have ever had, where I wanted to, I was just going to move forward with it, even though I didn't want to do this at all, and I'm opposed to the survey. Josh, who's very pro-survey, wanted to have general discussion about it, and it almost failed, so. I'll, I won't repeat myself too much. My, my, my take on the survey is I don't, I just, I disagree with how much we really gained from it. I feel, to be blunt, I feel like we get, we like to pat ourselves on the back, and I'm not, I'm not saying that staff has recommended doing a survey so they can feel good about themselves, that's not what I'm saying. But it doesn't- But it doesn't do me as a mayor, and I don't think it does you as council members, any good to hear that, once again, people love the job we do plowing the streets. We know that. I mean, that's, that's, it doesn't give us, I don't feel we get much to work on out of that. And there's probably some, there are some things that maybe staff does identify successes with having these surveys. I just argue, I feel we can go about those the other way. We're a town of five thousand people, we have a council consisting of five people, we have city hall, we have a number of contacts, we should know what our residents want, what our businesses want, what we should be working on. I don't think we need to pay, I don't think we're big enough to be paying money every three years to be doing the survey. That's a shortened, sweet version of my, hey, Josh, tell me why I'm wrong.
Well, I feel like, I feel like we're talking out both sides of our mouths then, when we say we want to engage our community in any way we can, and I think this is a cheap, you can debate the merits or the effectiveness of it, but it's a way to engage those that otherwise wouldn't communicate with us, come to council meetings, reach out to us via email, phone, or in person, so I think it's just another method to do that for eight grand, or whatever the cost would be. I think it's well worth it and valuable, and in the memo or in the packet, we were able to see some of the ways that we've used it as a city. Now, I don't disagree that some of the questions should be updated perhaps, and we should look at that on a regular basis and pay more attention, I guess, to some of those things, but I do think it's a valuable tool in the toolbox amongst the many other things, so.
Yeah, I, again, I, eight thousand dollars, I don't like spending any money on anything, but the fact that we have budgeted for it makes it something that I'm not going to die on a sword for necessarily. I mean, I'd be, I'd love to see us maybe redo some of the questions, pull some questions out, if we do move forward and have a survey. I'm, I don't know why we couldn't go to five, every five years versus every three years. Yeah, I'd be open to different ideas, but I, every survey we've sat through, I felt the same way, but I just don't feel we're getting the bang for our bucks, so I spoke up this time. But I'm just one person. What do you all think?
I feel it's good. I think, I agree with Josh, I think it's a great way to reach out to those residents, community members that may not feel comfortable coming forward and talking. And this is us going out, reaching out to them, talking to them, kind of putting them on the spot, but I think the response has been good. I think it's a great way to learn what we're doing well, which is always good to hear, but it's also a good way to find out what we need to work on and what needs to be fixed.
You think it's the best way to do it?
Well, obviously, the best way to do it would be, you know, going out and talking to everybody, but there's no feasible way that we can do that.
Well, we all run for office every two to four years, and we're going out and talking to people then.
I don't know. That's true, but-
I just think this is easier for them to talk to somebody that they don't know, sometimes it's easier to spill your guts and tell them exactly how you feel the city is doing, versus going to one of us and talking about it. Yeah, well, it's social media, I suppose, but we'd like to try and keep it off of social media.
So you're pro-survey?
I am.
Bryce, Amanda?
The one thing, like, my struggle is that, okay, so two hundred and fifty people of five thousand is half a percent. Is that right? No, it's five percent. And what, so if we're asking, I'm like, sorry.
Somebody do some math.
So somebody else could do the math for me before I speak. Five percent of our community, are we getting the whole picture? And, I mean, I-
Well, and are you getting those people that you talk about that say, we're, we don't want to come and talk about our feelings about this or that, so we're going to do the survey?
Right. So it's a good question, it comes up every time you do the survey. It's a statistical model, and it's proven to be a statistically valid sampling for the size of our community. We could, at an additional expense, increase the number of respondents that we want to get from a statistical standpoint, it's not going to dramatically increase the reliability of the survey. You're not, you aren't talking to everybody, but as far as who responds, don't quote me on this, but I believe in the past surveys, our non-responsive rate's been four percent, so it's incredibly high percent of people, because they call up and they say, hey, we're doing a survey about city services, do you want to talk about it? It's an anonymous situation, Kate's not going to remember who they were when they gave them feedback or whatever, so the response rate's really high. But you're correct, I mean, you're not talking to everybody, but it is a statistically valid sampling, whatever weight you put in that.
See, I also agree with Joe, though, that if we could maybe, instead of every three years, do it every five years, and definitely, I think we need to look at the questions.
The frequency of the three years was initially set when we redid the first one, we sought some, looked at what other communities did, we also sought, sought feedback from the consultant based on their experience doing these over a large number, you know, number of years in other communities, what they felt a reasonable frequency was to be able to not, to catch trends and be able to identify for policy reasons before it gets, you know, more askew. But that doesn't mean you can't go to a five-year frequency or a four-year frequency with regards to how often that you, often that you do it. I wouldn't go more than three, but it's possible you could go up to four, four or five years if you chose to, chose to do so. That's a decision we can make in three years, when we would normally look to rebudget for it.
So if we talk about changing questions, like hot topics that come to mind are enforcing ordinances, affordable housing.
So, what can I pick up on that? I, I think we know what we're going to get if we put out a survey with a question on affordable housing.
I disagree, I think that-
Really?
That there are plenty of people that are in favor of affordable housing. I also think, we may run into issues putting questions about affordable housing in a survey if we're not going to educate on what affordable housing actually is.
I agree.
As opposed to, you know, the automatic assumption of it's low-income housing, and so that, I guess maybe, we'd have to get pretty creative on that sort of topic.
But let me, let me, let me ask this, though. We know, because we've had enough presentations, that we do have a shortage of affordable housing. Is what we hear in a survey going to impact our decision to pursue, to pursue having affordable housing?
Maybe. I mean, I think a lot of council members, I'm not speaking for any of us, but can be influenced by public pressure of those loud voices that are sitting in the audience or on the Zoom call, and I think having a balanced perspective or another voice would be beneficial for certain topics. So, I mean, I do think, it may not change what we think is the right decision, but it might change our actual actions on some problems, because we feel the pressure.
Fair enough. Sorry, Tom, I want the rest of the council to be able to-
Well, I just had information on that specific instance from past surveys, where we asked a question on a time and topic, and everybody knew, knew the answer, if I can hold on that.
All right. Any?
I don't think there's any more thoughts at this point.
Bryce?
I haven't changed my mind, I'm anti-survey.
You're an anti-surveyer?
Yeah, I mean-
Hold strong.
I, well, I see how it is. Only, only because, I, I agree, I feel like we can get a very good measure in other avenues, you know, we, the fact that you went out and said, let's have a public forum on this, and just said, let's have kind of a listening session, so to speak, you know? Those are excellent ways, and I think those are better ways than a survey, in my opinion. And I, to me, I can't just, I can't, eight thousand is a lot of money for two hundred and fifty people to get their opinion, which, what kind of, you know, I don't like stats, so I'm just going to be honest, I hate stats. So I don't-
My T-shirts is born to audit on it.
What's the same, figures lie in Myers figures? Tom, go ahead, I cut you off, but I wanted everyone else to weigh in.
Well, I just made a couple of, you know, one, with regards to decisions, so it's not intended to be governance by whole, it's intended to inform decisions, so. It can give you an idea where people are. At the end of the day, the general public doesn't have the same level of knowledge, detail, city finances that you do have as a council, but understanding what the public sentiment on an issue can be valuable. In the twenty-twelve survey, we had done information related to, let's just say, it provided very clear that if we were going to go out and build a new water treatment facility, and it was going to result in increased costs, we knew the overwhelming majority of the community was going to hate that, and it's like, do you want to pay higher water fees? No, we don't. But at the end of the day, the council analyzed the options and chose that option, I also knew we didn't have a choice to do the project, but it also equipped the council with what the situation was going to be when they made that decision, and it prompted us to do a lot more pre-education and a lot more community engagement, and that we had community expos and those types of things, but we understood that we needed to do it at the time. The other thing with regards to the use is, when I was going through and soliciting from staff, you know, examples of how it's been used in the past, one of the things that became clear of everybody in the process, I probably use it much greater than everybody else due to the nature of my job, how I interact with people, how I have discussions with staff about programming, how I work with staff to develop recommendations up to council, so I actually use it quite a bit, more than probably anybody else in the organization. So, and that's probably why I speak so strongly to advocate for it, because of the value that I see in it. But at the end of the day, it's still juice and squeeze. Are you getting what you're paying for? And that's a council decision.
You look like a swing voter.
Again, here I am. I started speaking first.
I'll happily continue to talk and convince you, I should. I mean, I really do think, and I, I hear, or I know that there's value in doing like the forum and reaching out to people that way, I still think we're limiting some level of access to residents by not having it as an option, and, you know, you pick the controversial topic, vaccines, wearing masks, building a road up there that ninety percent of the people don't want, you're not going to be in that ten percent of that crowd that's actually going to speak up, most likely, so you're going to deter that minority voice from being heard most of the time. And I guess that's where, I think, again, having all the tools available, and it's not like we're doing this every year, I mean, I would, I would go back on what I said and keep it at that three-year mark, because a lot can change. I mean, look at the last year and a half, and how life has changed, and what our priorities might or might not be, so I think three years would be a good mark. And there was one other topic, and if I continue to talk for a second, it'll come back to me.
I'm waiting for my opportunity.
Then I'll continue to delay as much as I can. Accessibility, oh, well, I mean, and, yeah, I'll just shut up for a second.
No, if you want to keep filling those-
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, I don't accept that the community survey is the only way that we can reach out to those that don't engage in social media, aren't comfortable approaching a council first. This is your community, this is all of our communities. If you care about your community, it's incumbent upon you to reach out to someone and say something. You don't have to come to a public meeting and address the entire council, I understand it's not always, you know, the most comfortable thing to do, but we all have email addresses, we all have phone numbers listed, we, and there's so many ways to get your voice heard, and I just, I believe that if you are going to sit back and not, and just wait for a survey call, and that's going to be what you feel your opportunity is to contribute, you're missing the boat, and that's on you. I mean, I, we're all here because we care about the city. We may have stepped up in a bigger capacity than maybe others, and that's perfectly fine, but we're a small enough town where you should be able to say something, and if you're not comfortable saying something, I don't, I don't feel like I should apologize for not spending eight thousand dollars to have a sliver's chance of getting your opinion.
Well, and that's where I would push back again, to say that this isn't, nobody's saying that the survey is the only way to get information, it's one of the ways to get the information, and it's, it is simply just another method, and I, and I would argue the small-town nature of this makes it harder for people to speak up in the minority, because I'm going to get razzed in town if I'm the asshole that wants the affordable housing or whatever, I mean, so there's more of a reason to stay quiet and go along with the group think and the majority, and it's, I think, giving as much opportunity for folks to have whatever access is possible to communicate would be great. I mean, for the, the road up in Woodcrest, I mean, I reached out to the two people that expressed concern and safety reasons, and, and why they wanted the road, they weren't here, they weren't on Zoom, and I'm sure, rightfully so, because they have to live next to those neighbors who are very much passionate on the other side of it, so.
Understood, but you heard from them, right?
Because I reached out to them.
Because you reached out.
Sure.
Sure.
But I mean, so I think, again, giving as many tools or opportunities as possible, I think it is a, we've been talking about for years, to improve access and communication from the city to our residents, and I think this is one way we do it, and I think going back on that is talking out both sides of our mouth, and I think we should be, we should be putting in the effort.
So, and I, I would, I would come back with that, to that, and say, well, that's where maybe we look at, well, two points. The first point, I, if we went to every five years, okay, I don't like the idea of, and I don't think we necessarily do this, but shifting our priorities every three years. Staff has the impossible job of dealing with five elected officials, but every year, we talk about visioning and finding goals. I don't know that we want to be making giant policy shifts, or priority shifts every three years, that's where I would say maybe a five years is a little bit more appropriate for that, just from a pure staff planning standpoint. I forgot the first point I was going to make, so. Just concede that one to you. It was a good one, trust me.
I guess, Mike, if we're looking for people who wouldn't otherwise participate, it's not, you're not necessarily saying, like, people that maybe have very unique opinions, like, related to these questions, I'm just, does that, does that make any sense? Like, I guess I'm wondering, if we're looking at all of the results from the survey, are we looking at those outliers and doing something, and are we responding to those outliers? Or are we just looking at, like, the majority answer, like the-
Are you saying it's kind of like, it's a random sample size, so you're not guaranteed to get the people? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you're not guaranteed to get the people, but if you do get them, and they have things to say that don't fall in line with majority, what's-
We're still looking at a percentage of that, yeah, I got you.
But what are we doing with that, those people that have something to say?
Yeah, we don't know who they are, so there's not a whole lot that we can do.
Yeah.
No, but sometimes I think that it would be helpful if somebody maybe, somebody doesn't want, doesn't want the crosswalk across to, and this is how they're going to say it is on the survey, then we could maybe have more work sessions or more things in our newsletters about how important it is to have it, like, educating them so it reaches the mass, because we don't know who it is, but they could maybe find it in the newsletter and be like, okay, now I understand why, use it as another tool to be able to help educate.
And that, I guess that's like, where I'm really slowly getting to, is like, are we doing that? Like, are we taking those things and picking that stuff out to provide the education and that kind of thing? Are we using those, those responses? Or are we just looking at ninety-eight percent are satisfied with A, B, C?
Well, and that's where I would say too, I mean, you're on something that would, I mean, I don't think this, this tool is used for those micro, like, those specific topics, it's the macro things, and so to your point, and, or, I mean, we have to negotiate, you know, that's where if we were to look at it more of a strategic planning tool, and you're asking some of those macro things, so where I see the tool as being helpful is development, just development in general, so we can start to get an idea, I mean, we, I believe, I'll speak for myself, I believe the majority of our community wants more amenities, more development, but then as soon as we start doing anything related to development, we get constant pushback, and, and people are pissed off that we're developing anything. So, I mean, am I misguided in what I believe, by talking to the people that I talk to in my circles, that I'm wrong, and that's where I think a tool like this would give us more of that macro view- And that's where I think a tool like this would give us more of that macro view and maybe guide us in some of that strategic planning stuff.
Who would have changed your position?
It would help my position.
I think I'm at a, I think we're at a point now, so if we're looking back at the past surveys, we're in a new, a new world here where we're at the point of running the utilities down too. Where we're going to develop and we're going to get larger, where there may be more benefit and more response to the survey that might shed some light on what Josh was saying, so.
So you're pro survey?
I'm pro survey.
Okay. I mean, then, and that's where we are as a council, that's fine. I, this is a good discussion. And this is a discussion every time we talk about spending money on something like this we should be having. Yeah, I'm perfectly fine if at the end of the day, this is what the council decides to do. And like I said, we budgeted for the survey, so. You know, I, I can go along with it if it's a three, two. That's fine.
Are we going to look at questions?
Yes, so topic areas. So getting to some of your points, Amanda, I don't think you just ask, hey, do you think homes should be more affordable? And everyone's going to say yes. It's like, do you think your taxes should be lower? Yes. So I think what I would ask the council to do, because there has been some questions about the necessity of some of the questions, there's some that we would like, I would, there's actually a couple, one or two I'd like to drop from the last survey and one I'd like to add back from the 2012 and 2015 survey, having gone through the data again. But I think I would have the council identify topic areas or specific topics you want to know more about and then allow staff to work with the consultant to come up with questions that will get to the point and provide a better answer or dig out what the issue is. If you look at, if you remember the last meeting, we included last survey, there's certain things like we ask people about road maintenance, we educate them, okay, these are not the roads that we're talking about. You know, these are our roads. There are, there's some, and the consultant is experiencing crafting questions that can maybe educate a little bit without leading the respondent to down a golden path towards a predetermined answer. And that's what we want to, want to try and do. And you might have to ask two or three questions to really get to what you're looking for and then be able to test it, you know, and how it's structured and where it's placed in the survey. So are there particular topic areas that the council would like to explore as part of the survey? Now, these would be generally, I think, possibly in addition to what we already have at the $150, and I can't tell you. So I think what we do is we come back to the proposal, then you guys can say, these are the questions we want, and these are the ones we don't.
Good idea. I don't, it's hard to craft, well, I'm not an expert at this, but I think it'd be really hard to craft constructive questions as it leads to development. I agree with Josh's point. I mean, every campaign that I've been a part of, knocking on doors and, yeah, development, that's what we want to do. Everyone's like, yeah, we need more stuff in town. That's great. But it's like moving, you know, you, you like the end destination that you're going to, but the whole process sucks. There's nothing fun about it. And so it's, it's, I mean, you don't like to see traffic, or not traffic, you don't like to see, you know, lots of stuff being built right around your neighborhood because you like your neighborhood. We all love our neighborhoods. So I think we can really, we can kind of back ourselves into a corner almost with how we word those questions if they are related to development.
And you, and you have to be careful too. If you're asking very specific questions in a topic area, there is a strong, there can be an expectation from the public that you respond exactly as the poll indicates. Or you can at least be criticized if you don't.
Right.
But again, the intent is not to govern by poll. The intent is to provide information so you can make more informed decisions as policymakers. And we can look at it. So if there's areas that you're looking, like, so I think the issue when we're talking about development isn't, well, what about development? What I've kind of heard and what we've seen in recent commentary on social media is, how do people feel about the community continuing to grow, physically growing? And what, you know, that, that question. And if that's a topic area, we could put together, talk to the consultant about how would we approach that within the survey? For example.
Do we need a motion? Because I want to move this forward now. I delayed it once already.
No, I mean, there's, because you're just looking for direction.
Correct. So we can either say, yep, we're going to go do it. It's going to be 55 questions and staff will refine the, refine the questions a little bit based on the past set. And you guys in six to eight weeks will see a, you know, eight weeks we'll see a product and get a presentation from Peter Leatherman, Principal of Company. Or he can say, well, we want to move forward with it, but we want to take a look at the existing questions and/or additional question suites, in which case we would work on that. And we may have to ask Peter to come down and maybe talk through some of those items with you guys. What would they? Because I would need those topics and then we'd come back with a product for review.
It's probably easier to point out topics that we don't want. I mean, no offense to Cory, who I know is in the back, but I, I don't need a survey to tell me you guys do a good job plowing roads. I, I mean, I don't know. It's easier for me to cut down questions than to add questions. But I think areas of focus and that's kind of what you're going for, you're right?
Yeah.
Development, is there any other?
And with development though, what, I mean, what kind, where, how quickly, I mean, it just, as you start to go down that topic path or whatever, well.
I think transit is also a good, also a good one to have in there. I mean, I still think it's premature for a community, but we're going to get there and probably get there quicker than we need or quicker than.
So we had previously, MBTA had, if Joe will remember this, paid Josh, MBTA paid some additional dollars to add a suite of questions specific to transit and ridership and newsagent and those types of things. They declined to do this, do that this time? So if we were to do that, we would be on our, on our dime to do that.
Was there a reason why they declined this time? Or did they already have their answers?
I don't know. It might have been partially because of the circumstances they were in with COVID and reducing ridership and things like that. Now that we're coming out of it, we could reapproach them and see if they're interested or interested in maybe doing a more limited suite. We could revisit that question as well.
If you ask them, please. Yeah, it doesn't hurt to ask, but the most I can say is, nope, still not going to do it.
Okay. We got two topic areas.
I, I didn't see a list of the questions that were set out.
It was included with the last packet, the previous survey.
Ash, can you bring up one? Josh read all the questions last time.
I can, I can quickly put it up on the overhead if you want to see it. But it's about 55. It's, I think it was total 65 questions, 10 of them were for MBTA.
I don't know that I'm going to sit and go through each question by question, but we're, because you're just talking about general.
Yeah, so here, here's, here's a thought for purposes of willingness. Originally, the original timeframe of this was designed so that we'd be getting the results and as we're coming into our vision and goal-setting stuff. But the delays of not having all the council here, then the continued discussion, we're not going to make that anyways. So I, if the council doesn't want to move forward with it, it's the whole thing, would you rather have it done right or fast? I would say done right. So what we can do is I can email out to the council the previous question suite that we had. And then you can look through it for opinions. And then in the meantime, while you guys are looking at that, I will, we'll contact MBTA. We'll talk to Leatherman and Norris about questions related to development to improve. And I will ask you guys to have your thoughts on additional question suites or questions back by certain deadlines so that we can package it back for council. Put something together for further council discussion. Does that sound like a deal?
Sounds like a great plan.
Set a deadline. Do I need a deadline? Thank you. Put a, put a thing on the calendar or something too, invite or something.
It'll be a, here's the stuff, please get your comments back to me by XD. Yep.
Already won, pipe down, Josh.
It's been a while.
On to administration.
We have three items under administration. The first one, as we, I just mentioned, is our vision and goal-setting process. So last year was less than ideal with regards to COVID. We couldn't have our normal work session where we worked through these items. And so for assumptions, we're going back to 2019, which was our last full process. And I outlined for the council what we did. And what we're really looking for is feedback from the council is, does this process work for you? And any other feedback before we start putting it all together, because right now we're planning to come back in June with that, with those materials for that discussion. So we don't want to be going over here if the council wants something over there. So this is just a feedback session.
A lot of opinions just flying around. The other thing I need to remind myself on this is this really, this is probably a really important tool for staff.
It's a very important tool.
So what is this, can I throw the question back at you? I'm just going to anyway. Is it, is this a process that is, that you feel you get the most out of, out of, you feel you get the best feedback from us as city council with this process?
Yes, as long as the council's engaged. So it's not even so much the specific outcomes as even the discussion that occurs through the process. Joe, Josh and Kate will remember this, but we had gotten to a point where these had turned kind of into a yep-yup session, where there was not a lot of discussion. And the suggestion from the mayor, which was an excellent one, was based on what we had seen some other communities doing, is in addition to doing our goals and priorities type of discussion, was also starting to identify kind of a policy discussion agenda for the next 12 months. Coming up, the list of these are policy areas that we want to dig into or talk about during the work session setting. Usually it was just an initial discussion to decide, educational in nature or foundational, to decide whether it goes somewhere. And I thought that was very effective. And we did, between 2019 through 2020, we nailed a lot of those topics and I thought that was very effective. And tying those back up into what our goals were and what the vision was for the community, I thought was very effective. I thought that was one of our, one of the most productive sessions we had had, both in the discussion and in the outcomes for a few years. And I think we should try that again and see how effective it is.
Come on, boy.
There you go.
The second item is the first quarter financial report. I don't, not going to give a presentation. Are there any questions?
I, I had one. And that was regarding the water fund expenses. Did, noted 92%, well, one area was 92% professional services for water, I think, sewers, also a high percentage of professional services. My question is, because I think in the comments, it alluded to, it was the increased work due to the interchange of time. Does that get?
Okay.
You know where I'm going with this.
Once, as we're, as we're rolling out the project fund and moving expenses into a bill, would you quote it over there?
It's just been done, yeah.
So we're running the reports and showing up.
Okay.
That was the only one I had. I think everyone else had. You're good.
Last item is Lea Municipal Cities and Metro Cities Legislative Policy Committees. I've provided the listed committees dates they need and there were links to provide more information on the specific topic areas. Basically, it's just an opportunity for the council to talk about if they're going to be sending representatives to those committees and plus them with the authority to speak on behalf of the city. Last year, I know both council member Josh and council member Amanda were very active in those.
Josh, you're, you're kind of a big hitter in Metro Cities now, aren't you?
I just had my orientation to the board today, so that'll be fun. I'm trying to look and see which ones I've been sitting on before. It's all virtual right now, and so we go back to this in-person crap. It's going to be tough. Because I can be in multiple places at once right now with two computers.
Are you looking for the days and times on?
No, I was just trying to think, because I usually do the Housing and Economic Development Committee for Metro Cities, I think. And maybe the Transportation and General Government. And then for the League, it was Local Economies and.
Service delivery.
Yeah, service delivery. But I don't need to be on all of those if other people want to do it. I will likely do Local Economies regardless if others want to do it, because that's the one where LE13 is on there. And I've been trying to flip that for four years, five years. Metro Cities just told us that theirs will be virtual this, this year. Yep, so July, August, September.
The League is planning on the first two being virtual. I mean, third wasn't up in the air. I wouldn't be surprised if it changes that though with the, with the, yeah.
So if they lift it and you're back in person, where, where do we go?
It would be at Lea Municipal Cities offices up in St. Paul. They're just north and west of the Capitol campus.
The nice thing with the League though, I want to say most of them are all virtual, or have a virtual option because it's statewide Minnesota. So you have people from Rochester and Duluth and all over zooming in, Alexandria and stuff. They don't drive down, so.
I'm not going to take on anymore, so I'm not going to participate in any of these.
I would be, I mean, I would be up for the Human Resources and Data Practices. But is that what you were?
I was Fiscal Futures.
Okay. I mean, if that's something we.
You did the same thing last year.
Either that or the Improving Local Economies. You guys tell me what you want to hear about, I guess, you know? What's more important? If we're not going to get to all of them, is there?
I would just, follow whatever your passion about.
So housing.
Makes it easier to get to meetings.
Housing, the ones related to housing and development are probably, for sure, we would want to have some involvement and representation on those. So probably Improving Local Economies and the Housing and Economic Development would be important ones for us to have some representation on. And working reverse, you know, metropolitan agencies, yes, that's important. But of the ones that are out there, I don't know that that's probably the most important one for us to be engaged in. I think improving service delivery would be important. Transportation and General Government, I'll be honest, we have some specific projects, but the level of policy that they're talking about, I don't know. As, as it's, that's the biggest one for us to be involved in, municipal revenues and housing economic from Metro Cities would probably be the most important. And I'll be honest, probably the Human Resources and Data Practices is probably the least. There's a lot of really technical people who want to get involved in those items. I don't know that it's best served for us to be super engaged in. There's other people that can fight that, you know, but if you're interested.
Sure, you can, yeah, you can bring value to the city.
And there's nothing to say, once you sign up, you can't say this is stupid, I'm not going to go. And the nice thing is when you sign up for some of these, you get all the package information too. So if there's a speaker on the agenda, I mean, so there's a lot of these too. Speakers come into the first two sessions, you learn about the various policies, you figure out which ones are the hot topics for the other cities. And then the third one is the one where votes typically are taken on some of those more controversial or ones that are up for discussion.
So an example on Human Resources would be the legislation related to CPS for first responders and the impact it has to Austin and the League's position on that, on the topic. Another one would be, for instance, if recreational marijuana gets passed, the implications to employers, all employers and cities and stuff becomes incredibly important. That's not likely to happen. The House is debating it tonight. It's probably not going anywhere on the Senate side. But that is a topic that's come up and is drawing in strength from a public opinion standpoint. And so those are all items that will be important there as examples.
Okay, well.
Josh, which ones in Metro Cities, you're in housing or transportation? Josh, which ones in Metro Cities, you're in Housing or Transportation?
Well, I said it for both of them.
So, okay, so those are good.
Well, I'll do, and they actually last two and a half hours long?
They, they, but they're also very good about, in my experience, keeping it right to the block, because people are, so.
I'll do the Improving Service Delivery. And just for giggles, I'm, I'm gonna check out the Human Resources, just because I want to know it, I want to pay attention to it.
And Amanda, you're doing Fiscal Futures?
Yeah, can you do that again? I think I did Municipal Revenues as well last year.
Okay.
They kind of aligned.
Right.
Unless you want them.
I only had interest in one, Josh got it covered.
Which ones are that, local?
The Housing.
Oh, I mean, seriously, there's gonna be ones that neither one of us are gonna make, or one of us is gonna be able to make.
Sounds good.
Let's represent, right?
We can have two, not three, right? That's the, the rule?
Yeah, and so if you're interested, you simply need to go through the link on website and just register for it. And then I'll send you information. If you have any questions, or if the focus call me, and then I will navigate the organizational bureaucracy thing after.
Well, they are fun discussions too, because you get people on all sides of the topic, and you can have some good debates.
There's one that, that was being moved, I think, to Service Delivery from a fiscal ones last year, it's about private roads. And there's one little town, I can't remember, but they're very important.
It's still there?
I don't remember, but.
All right, are we good on the committee appointments?
Yeah.
All right, Public Works? Hey Cory. Got anything?
I don't.
Unless we, if there's more questions, we can move right into the mailboxes.
Can someone please ask questions, so we hold off the mailboxes? Okay, but before we get started on this, I want to just kind of address Josh, because this was kind of a Boulder Point-ish area, right? I'm not sure, why can't, whatever, whatever we would do would kind of apply to the whole city, right? Not specifically to Boulder Point.
That would be my recommendation.
So why would Josh be, be unable to participate in this discussion?
If the council chooses to apply it specifically, just for Andrea's benefit, Josh is on the board for the association, for Boulder Point Association and the rest of the?
Recently appointed.
Voluntold.
But if we talk in the context of this being an entire city, Josh should have every right to participate in this discussion.
Right, it, it's a fine line, because it just depends on whether you are talking about it as it applies to the entire city, or you're really talking about it as it applies to this neighborhood.
So can we treat this in the context of the entire city, so Josh can participate?
Yes, and I would suggest, because any decisions you make related to Boulder Point and their specific concerns could potentially be applied generally, or not, depending on how you parse it. But as a discussion, yes, it would, I think it would be impactful to the entire community.
You're in, Josh.
Nice to meet you.
Sorry, go on.
No, so the question, so the discussion tonight was prompted by Boulder Point, homeowners association and their officers, over a number of years, we've had discussions with them related to paw strikes with their mailboxes. The city does allow things to be located in the right away, in a typical single-family residential neighborhood. There is right away ten, five to 15 feet into the front yard. So there's lots of things located there. You have mailboxes, you have landscaping, you have sprinkler systems, you have sod. And all of those things are potentially hit by snowplows when they're snowpawing. Snowpawings are not perfect. The conditions that they're driving under, the visibility that they have, and just the sheer size and weight of the equipment that they're driving, they're occasionally going to get outside of the curb and things will get hit. Now, those things that are located in the right away are usually located there by permit, meaning they're things that we allow to be there, generally at the risk of the person who put it there. Or sometimes they're put there without permit. People put it there and we don't want it there, and it still shows up. To be consistent on how we handle that stuff with regards to snow and ice removal operations, we do have a section in our policy that this is how we're going to handle it. We adopted that back about 10 years ago. And it, to a large degree, provide detail where we didn't have detail, or kind of documented what past practice had been, et cetera. And what, to a large degree, prompted it is, we were moving to do snow and ice operations in-house. And previously, we had been contracting out for those services. And so a lot of those headaches, quite honestly, were on the contractor. And so when we had it in-house, we wanted to make sure that we were handling everybody equitably, same, same, depending on the circumstances. So mailboxes. Mailboxes are permitted by, right, you can do it, you don't need to get a special permit, you don't need a building permit, you don't need to get any special approval from the city where you locate it, as long as it doesn't create a hazard from like a visibility standpoint at an intersection. However, if you want to get your mail, you gotta put it where the post office would like it to be, and it has to meet their specifications with regards to design. It has to be, the face of mailbox has to be six to eight inches back from the back of curb. The bottom of the mailbox needs to be 41 to 45 inches tall, and that's so that the mail carrier driving a normal vehicle can easily pull mail in and out. That's their whole thing is delivery. From a snowpawing standpoint, it has to do with clear zone for the plows coming by. And here are a couple of examples. You'll notice here, in this mailbox, mailbox is eight inches back. It's 42 inches tall, and the face of the paper boxes are at the face of the post. And what that does is it provides clear area, so your plow, even if it rides over the curb, is gonna go underneath. And even with throwing snow, it's less likely to damage the mailbox structure. Now, throwing snow, we hold no liability, we don't do anything to assist with that. And quite honestly, there's no obligation on the part of the city to necessarily even replace or do anything with mailboxes. It's by, we allow people to do it. We just feel that if it meets these USPS standards and we still hit the primary structure, the post or the mailbox, we're way, we're outside our lane and we probably should replace it. And so we, we do that. And we replace it with a standard post and standard mailbox. If it's in the middle of winter, of course, you can't put it in the ground, so we put out a temporary, we have a selection of temporary mailboxes that we put out in spring, comes in, we're doing our other stuff, we come in, we put in, put it in mailboxes. This set of mailboxes actually does not meet the height requirement, believe it or not. It's actually lower, but even with that additional setback, you can see it creates a lot of additional room for the plow to pass by. Now, do all the mailboxes in town comply? Oh, good golly, no. And we do hit them, and we do hit them around the community. Is it like, Cory, how frequently would you say we'd hit mailboxes?
Well, we have 15 hundred mailbox people that hit 10 a year, that's like 0.07% of them. So I think we're doing pretty good.
That happens every year.
Probably 10, probably 10 each year.
Yep, that we have to replace. So our odds are pretty good, but it does happen. The issue that we have specifically in Boulder Heights is the design of the mailbox. There's a couple of features to it. As you noticed in those previous mailboxes, the mailboxes, or the paper boxes underneath, are plastic paper boxes. They're basically screwed up from the bottom. So if they get hit by the snow, or the, they get contacted by the plow, they just rip off, fly into the neighbor's yard, and you come back and you get into one, or you screw the old one back on just a different spot. It doesn't have the same impact. With the construction of these mailboxes, this development, when it's developed, was very high aesthetics. You know, it's a golf course community, it has a certain prestige, it has covenants. And so the paper boxes were also constructed out of wood, and they're part of the structure. So when you contact a paper box, because it's, it's part of the overall structure, it does more damage when you contact it. The other aspect to it is that there's typically little or no setback from the back of curb, so it's closer to the curb. So the likelihood of being struck is more frequent. And also, the, from a height standpoint, because the paper box is an integral part of the structure, it's very low, relatively speaking, and so it increases the strike rate. And so over the years, because of the design and nature of it, we've struck, we strike mailboxes there probably more frequently than any other given neighborhood. It's not that we don't hit them other, but the entire neighborhood is built this way, not just one bank in one neighborhood. The difficulty in the situation is that the association documents actually call out for the mailboxes to be designed and built this way. So even if, so one, we, we hit them more frequently, and they don't meet USPS standards. And our policy says, if you don't meet USPS standards, we don't replace it. But even if they did, we can't put in the standard post and the standard mailbox, because it doesn't comply with association documents. The difficulty that the board has is that it's not easy to change architectural covenants or architectural standards within an association you typically have to have. And they, they'll have to talk about their specific documents, usually have to have a supermajority of people present at a meeting, and you have to, you know, it's, it's fairly difficult. I've been involved with association boards, and it's a challenge to get some of those things changed. So we get into a situation where you have residents whose mailboxes, they are getting struck, we are hitting them, would like the city to replace it, because we hit it. We turn around and say, well, it doesn't meet our standards, and so we're not replacing it. Why doesn't it meet the standards? Well, your association documents, they go to the board, the board members go, well, here's our association documents, we can't do anything about it. And then you just have a frustrated homeowner. This situation has gone on for a number of years, and the current board has decided to take a more proactive approach with regards to getting this issue resolved. And so they've come forward with a couple of, here's an example of, this is one of the older banks, but on slopes, this is a downhill slope here. To keep the mailboxes level, it might be higher here, but it's lower on the other end. You'll also notice these little pieces of wood. That's the bottom half of paper boxes that were previously ripped off, and they just took weather treated two-by-sixes and screwed them on the bottom. They're just really shallow paper boxes now on this particular set. So the association really had two topics or questions for the council. The first one is they would like an exception from the policy for the mailboxes within their neighborhood, because it's requirement by the architectural documents of the neighborhood. They feel that because they're an entire neighborhood and not just an individual set of mailboxes, their circumstances are different than every place else, to be blunt about it. They feel that since the neighborhood is developed, developed prior to the policy, that that should provide some form of a grandfathering status. And they also would like to suggest that the council amend the policy to provide for a cash reimbursement equivalent to the value of that typical replacement, if somebody wants to do, do something that's enhanced or more than that. We've only had one situation, we did do that once. It was, I mean, an administrative decision to, to do that. We've only had one person that's requested that over the years, and that's what we did. We basically took a look at the cost of the materials to do it, because either they're doing the labor or we're doing the labor, and we basically cut them a check for that amount. And so the suggestion from the association is that we amend the policy that, at the discretion of the amount, for Cory, he'd say, okay, this is, this year, this is what this stuff costs. We'll either cut you a check, or we'll do this. I think we condition that on, we'll cut you the check as long as when it gets reinstalled, it's reinstalled and meets standards, we'll reimburse you that amount. Because when we install, we make sure it meets standards when we replace it. So those are the questions. From a staff standpoint, we think this is good to get resolved. I think over the years, Cory and I have spent a lot of time talking with various board members over the years as they've had turnover. It seems to be cyclical, as you have new board members come on. It's frustrating for Cory, because he doesn't have, it's not a clear black and white situation, and it's an ongoing issue that he has to deal with. For the board, it's incredibly frustrating, because it's an issue that they have some difficulty. Staff does have some feedback, though, opinions rated to the request. One, I don't think it's necessarily unique to their neighborhood. Yes, their association required it, but it was a decision by their association. When you buy into a neighborhood and has association documents, you're inheriting all of that. I would have a difficult time as the administrator, and I think Cory would have a difficult time as the Public Works Director, trying to explain to a resident why they get a special exception and the person down the road, who is also doesn't meet standards, doesn't do it. I think that would increase the number of mailboxes that we are replacing. With regards to it, unless the association changes the standards for their mailboxes, we're continuing to pay for or replace something that's gonna be, we're, we're basically replacing the problem going forward. And it's not that it happens all the time, but it's just more frequent in this neighborhood because of the design overall. Associations can change their documents. It does vary how you need to do it, depending on association documents, but I was president of association. We had to change our documents, we had the same challenges, and we got it done. It can be done, it's not easy, but it can be done. So we would suggest that the association really look at doing, making those changes. With regards to the cash and love, we actually think that's a good idea. It's fair. You're gonna get into the inevitable, well, that's not enough, or that's not a fair amount, and you're gonna have that inevitably. But either we're paying for it and going by, and spending time and manpower to go buy materials, or we're just cutting somebody a check. If they install it, and all we're doing is going out with a measuring tape to make sure it meets standards, so we reduce issues in the future, I think that would be an acceptable option with regards to that. This isn't a clear-cut, this isn't a clear-cut issue. It has a lot of longstanding history, and the board members that are here tonight, they've inherited it when they came on the board. And so we asked representation from the board to come tonight. So while I presented their concerns, I'm gonna filter it through my view as a staff person and our history, and it's best if their commentary comes from, from them with regards to their request.
Hi, I'm Tara, you guys know me. I am one of the frustrated people whose mailbox was hit, direct to stand over here. My mailbox was hit a couple of years ago, and so it's been kind of an ongoing, I call Tom when I think of it and bother him, and then I end up talking to Cory, and it just ends up being this giant mess. So I guess ultimately, we understand that some of the mailboxes in the neighborhood are falling down and desperately need to be replaced. So as a board, we would like to send out notification to the homeowners in the neighborhood to let them know, hey, these need to be replaced, this is the covenants, but they don't meet specifications, so if they get hit by, you know, plow, the city's not gonna replace them. We, we would just want to let people know, this has to be done, but our hands are tied. So I think that's kind of, we're coming to you to get an understanding for where the city stands at allowing us to have an exception, or not. And then we will bring that information back to our neighborhood and, and move forward from there. But we just want to put the issue to bed, because it's been an exhausting circle, as Tom mentioned, so.
Do you have anything to add, George?
Oh, I'm teleprompter.
George is leading.
Most of you know me that have been around for a while, I tag your head. Those that don't know, I'm moving to Arizona in about a month. So historically, we tried to take on the mailboxes as an association. We took it to vote, we got it voted on, we took it the following year, we got it voted and confirmed. And then our attorney said you can't do that, because it explicitly calls out in the covenants that the mailboxes are the accountability of the homeowner. It is explicit in there that the association doesn't manage it. So, to Tom's point, we need to go back, and it is a supermajority. I think it's 75% of the homeowners have to vote in the affirmative. If you're not present, you don't vote, that's enough. We've had the success in doing that one time, about 15 years. We're lucky to get a quorum at our meetings these days. And that's with Tara going around and getting all the proxies that we need. Realistically, trying to get it changed, if you want the association to change it, you as the city need to go tell the homeowners you're gonna build, unless they approve it. Otherwise, you're not gonna, it's not gonna happen. And even then, they're gonna be upset. And then all that really does is cause more confrontation issues, and we don't want that. We really don't. We can, the way in which it's worded, it doesn't talk about height and everything else in the covenants. That, that's not discussed. The make and model of the mailbox is, but the height's not. So the reality of it is, we could, through a board action, because it's not explicit, state that as a standard for replacement when they come through. So this allows a path, if you will. It's not perfect, but it's a path.
George, Cory and I have talked about this a lot.
Yeah.
Disproportionately. But if they, if they could just be moved back to that eight inches from the back of curb, that alone would be huge, and if they could be brought, I mean.
And we said it practically.
And we said it practically, if you had one or the other, if you had the height or the distance back, you'd be fine.
And again, if they're being replaced, we can say this is the standard for replacement, they have to meet blah, blah, blah and put that forward. That can be done as a board action. Coming in and saying, hey, you know, I know your mailbox has been there for the last 15 years, you got to go move it. We're not going to have a whole lot of success with that. Because I don't have a covenant that says you have to move it. What I have is a city policy that says that. Well, then that needs to come from you, not us, because it's your policy, not ours. So this is that whole.
Okay, one thing that, I know that you guys said that this didn't come about until the policy, but the mailbox standard has been in place at least since 2000. So they were put in incorrectly before our policy just mirrored what was there.
Is that the Newmarket policy or the Elbow policy?
No, 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 that's a USPS service. Yeah, postal service was 41 to 45 inches.
For the mailbox, it doesn't cover the bottom of the box.
And it actually says that no boxes can meet part of the structure of the mailbox and actually be connected to it. So I just did a.
You can take that up with Frank Packer. He's retired in Florida. He was the man who helped us all. I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
What I can tell you is as we've had development expansion, we've gone to the postmaster and the postmaster's school is exactly what he wanted and where. Don't want to talk about that. But coming back to this, I think this offers a path. I mean, that's what we're looking for, is a path. How do we take care of what you need, take care of what we need and not have people. I don't know what else to offer.
And as far as the second part goes, we don't expect you to reimburse the full cost of the mailboxes, although it'd be desirable. We just ordered the framework, not even the main post and it was over $800. So it's not cheap to replace the mailboxes, especially now with lumber costs. But to be reimbursed what you would typically replace, I think is fair.
And then we can say, you as a homeowner, you saw it, we meet the covenants, the city's giving you this, you have to take that as a rest because that's what it says.
I think the cash in lieu is almost a mill grader, the cash reimbursement.
What kind of, I guess, agreements or what would we put in place to, you know, kind of have some sort of a policy? That are we going to put some sort of labor cost associated with that if they want their own? Are we going to, you know, hit Menards, Fleet Farm and Home Depot and get the cost of an average mailbox? How would we?
My thought is that we would try and be equivalent. So if it's a five, a mailbox set with two posts, we would look at the cost of two posts and five mailboxes of the standard type. We wouldn't take the amount for a single one and multiply it by five because realistically there's that amount of material. So we would number posts going into the ground, it would be equal to one of those for each post going in the ground. And you would, for each mailbox that was there, that amount, so.
Well, you're just looking at the replacement cost from that.
Yep, and I would suggest we reimburse materials, material costs.
So I have a question for you. We give them the cash, they fix it, next year it happens again, same box. How many times are we going to keep doing it until they actually put it to the USPS specifications that should be?
That was staff recommendation, we would reimburse upon, we'd reimburse up to that amount upon installation, provided it's compliant with USPS standards.
Okay. So they put the mailbox in not to USPS standards?
They don't.
Then they don't get a.
They don't get the reimbursement.
Okay.
That's fair.
I would, so I think with regards to something that happens next year, if we got this in place, that's with regards to the replacement. I think the issue goes to existing mailboxes. It would be staff's recommendation and we just have to say as a city, because of the implications all the way around the city, that if they weren't originally installed. Because when I buy a house, I inherit the mailbox that Bob put in when he built the house one years ago type of thing. And it's probably, it may not be compliant. If I get hit, how am I any different than, let's ask you, how am I any different than Boulder Point? So we would suggest that anything that's existing that's noncompliant, the normal policy would still apply. But I think it's reasonable to include a replacement dollar amount. The question would be, if it was noncompliant to start with, should we pay that? And I think that's the biggest, one of the biggest questions for the association. Because we know that theirs weren't compliant with USPS standards and that's been our policy. If it was compliant and we still hit it, we shouldn't have hit it, been our policy.
Well, and you started to get to where I was going to ask the question. So far it feels like we've just been focusing on both of them and that's right. I'm trying to break the big picture so I can be part of this discussion. So, I mean, I think the overall policy in my brain then must be, or my opinion is it should be, that anything is not compliant. Because we're not going to go, I would assume Corey's not going to go around or his team's not going to go around and mark whatever is not compliant or compliant in the locks in the city. I think a reasonable approach would be first go around, you knock it down, or it gets knocked down. Again, we're talking about potentially 10 mailboxes a year. So this isn't like a huge thing.
It was acting good faith.
But yes, I mean, it's first go around, compliant or not compliant, it gets replaced with the cash in lieu of, and then upon replacement, it needs to comply. I mean, I think that makes sense in my brain.
Can I follow up on one thing? I think it's fair, as I'm exiting and tagging the rest of the board, that they could take a position, and I'm going to connect you guys to something you don't like maybe, but, take a position that even if it wasn't hit, but the mailbox bank is beyond the point that it's acceptable for the covenants when we say you have to replace it. That doesn't involve you at all, but if the board were to adopt the right standard, that's what they have to replace it to. So it's not that the city has to pay for them, only the ones that get hit. But then the board can enforce as mailboxes need to be replaced and we're at that point. That's happening, here's what they have to meet.
So that's what we would do, we would send out a letter and we're intending to send out a letter anyways. So we would ask them to move the mailboxes back, per my understanding, move them back?
Back or up. Or should we, the problem is, our plows can't make it underneath them. And if we ride up on the curb at all, we're hitting the mailbox. And then if we hit the mailbox, so it's either you're going to hit a mailbox or this snow is packed up under my, under my mailbox and we can't get through here and the post office won't look at my mail. And I mean, it's a double edged sword. We, I mean, trust me, all I want to do is fix the problem, but I can't go fix the mailboxes because I can't put them back up to standards. And that's why we're here and I know we're all looking for resolution, but yes, if you go up, I mean, honestly, it's still not going to meet standards. But if you're up or you're back, we're not going to hit them.
Well, and if you're going to send something out to your Boulder Point community that once it needs to be replaced, just do it back to the USPS standards, the specifications. So it's going to have to go back and it has to go up. I mean, if they have to replace it anyways, they may as well make it to the USPS standards.
I would.
I still don't think we will meet the standards of the box, leave the paper box underneath. Either, even if we go back and up, we still won't meet the USPS standards. Unless we totally change our mailboxes, which would be a change in our policy.
Because the mailbox itself will be too high if we raise it up to the point where the structure itself is down.
Because the paper underneath.
Yeah, because of the step here.
And when the board, one is to take on the mailboxes, we were trying to correct some of those as well.
But we have looked to change as much as we could without changing too much, but to me, I mean, who gets paper mail actually put in there besides junk at this point? Not very many people.
So are those paper boxes, I mean, so your standard, can that angle on the bottom, can it go back?
Right.
Like if it can go back for six inches?
We could.
If you can do that, that solves all your problems right there. You're going to get your fight.
Move them back six, eight inches and put a little more of an angle on it.
And I don't know if they're custom made or if they come.
At this point, they're all custom made.
I mean, if you, if you can cut that angle down, you're going to be a lot. Yeah, you're, then, I mean, you're bringing that height up and you're going to make it there.
That would fly.
So I don't know that there's a perfect solution, but if you adopt a standard that reduces the likelihood it strikes, it would be. And then the council has to make a decision about just generally, regardless of whether or not it originally met standards, do we replace it if we strike it? Or do we only replace it or capable of replacement if it met standards to start?
I'm fine, I, like Josh said first time around, I just think it's a good faith thing from the city. It's not like we're talking 50 mailboxes.
Because there's a lot of them out there that don't meet standards and we change our policy that if it doesn't meet standards, we don't replace it.
So you're talking about changing the policy that if we strike it?
I am, and I'm going to, I'm, I'm just going to admit, when I moved to town, I did not read what the ordinance was on mailbox height. I'm pretty sure that's pretty common. You know, I, I don't know. I, I, I feel for the homeowner in this case. I mean, that's, it's a tough spot to be in. It's not like we take out a ton of mailboxes. It'd be a different story if there's 100 mailboxes a year that were taken out. This, this just seems like, it feels like the right thing to do, that's my opinion.
And I assume we're cleaning this up with all new development stuff, I mean, and educating develop, I mean, no, it can't be a hands off thing either. I mean, it's got to be, if we start to see, you know, Boulder Heights mailboxes going up or Pete's Hills going up and they're legitimately wrong. I mean, I think that's on us to communicate that with them and or force the USPS to do their job.
In my experience, developments that have gotten out in recent years, they're either put up like, they look like this. Because this is the standard and this is what the post office wants. Or what's becoming more common, if you go to Pete's Hill Development, they have a single bank for the entire.
Pete's Hill and Boulder Heights.
And Boulder Heights have a single bank for the entire development.
So I guess my point is, it's getting cleaned up naturally. So we're not going to have to worry about it as much moving forward with new developments.
We're dealing with neighborhoods that are 25 to 30 years plus old and older or we're individuals where the homeowners are responsible for putting out the initial mailboxes.
And from our perspective, we talked about the banks, but because of our covenants, we can't.
It's the same thing, it's a change.
We can't switch. Because that would have been easier, just. But.
Maybe we just need to have more problems in Boulder Point so people can come and ball, I don't know.
Don't hold your breath.
We could just fix projects there, it'd get you fired up.
I would say that I don't think we've, if we've hit a mailbox, I don't think we've never not replaced one throughout the city. So it's, I mean, that's in our policy, but I mean, if it's, if it's in the middle of winter and it's, you know, marginal and you obviously hit it, we're usually going to replace it. It's just these ones, so tough because you can't just go and replace it, so.
I mean, they made mine functional for the last two years, they're just really ugly. So I get mail, they're just not pretty and don't meet covenant.
So just a question, so you cannot meet the standard, whatever you put up will not meet the standard the city currently has to post office. So how is the city's policy about payment?
If you meet a certain standard, what standard will that be that will work for them?
I think I heard they can by increasing the effort and moving it back.
So the policy, the way they come into word, it has to do with the look of the box.
Yep.
And the specific brand of the mailbox is specified, the make, model, color. There is leeway in terms of a little bit further back. We can adopt that as a standard because that's not specified in the color.
Maybe a little higher.
And we probably can take a cut on the angle, just take a little biased cut there. And if that helps as well, there's some little subtle things.
So what you're saying is you can meet the standards?
I would say you could meet standards by that because you're going to move that back six inches.
We can probably get pretty close.
You're, you're going to meet standard, I mean, they'll still probably have to come up. And the new ones, when you put them in, if they're up a little bit more and back a little bit and you cut that angle, you're going to make it on all of them. And then if we hit them, then.
At that point.
Then we pay to replace them. I think that's probably.
I just want to make sure that whatever the city's policy is, is actually going to work and there's true coordination on those specifics.
So again, I'll speak for the incoming board, I mean, because after being president for the last 10 years, I can't stop talking. What I would suggest then, how about the board has a takeaway to come up with the standard design of the board? Board's got a meeting I think coming up sometime here. But the board can do that as an executive action of the board and say, this is a new mailbox standard. Bring that, make sure it's in agreement with the city and say that's going to become the new standard.
And we'll create some documentation on the part of the city that's, that we have determined that this design meets our, the terms of our policy. And then that will be on file here, it'll be on file with the board and then if there's future issues, we're.
And then we just have to ensure every new one meets it. And then we can make some recommendations for the existing ones, go take a hex home.
Yes, but, and you can say with the existing ones, the city may or may not replace it. But what I'm hearing the council say is even with the existing ones, if we block them, we're going to pay, contribute towards the replacement, but it will have to meet the new standard that we set.
And if it doesn't meet the new standard and it's hit a second time, it will not be reimbursed.
Now I'm going to ask, now I'm going to ask a question because I'm going to get this question tomorrow from this person right here. Is this going to go retroactive at all?
I don't know if that's, I don't feel like it should. Just my first gun reaction.
So let me pose the question.
I can expand upon that if that helps the conversation a little.
It's fine, you have a member back here of your facilities that just made the comment they've never not replaced one. So now I'm taking a stance counter to the.
No, 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 no. I've not taken a stance to. Yeah, the question is, is a policy that we put in place retroactive? I mean, we're replacing it anyway, so it's kind of a moot point.
So we went retroactive just this last season because we're still in spring. Corey, how many did you hit in the neighborhood last year?
Neighborhood?
Yeah.
I haven't heard of it.
I don't, I don't think we hit any.
All right, let's go retroactive.
I think hers is the only one you're going to hit in our neighborhood, I can't speak for everybody.
So question, and I don't remember what the topic was or, but there's something in my brain that says when we changed the policy, I don't know if it was a water related thing or what it was, but because the person who brought it up and was the like instigator, the bringing up of the topic, we did retroback to that particular person at the start of the issue and then moved forward from there. I just don't remember what it was.
Sure. Water bill or whatever.
Let's just be clear, retroactive doesn't help because I assume that whatever was put up was put up and was not met.
But the first, they said the first time, even if it doesn't meet code, they'll pay it. The second time, if it still doesn't meet.
We're saying will for ones that we struck this, like this last snowplow season.
Right, but you're.
We really got to move on here.
If you struck it, you're paying it.
This is getting outrageous.
To meet your new policy.
Correct, so as they put it up, it would have to comply with the new standard that we signed up on as, in what we believe to be the standard.
Right, and that wouldn't happen, anything that's been struck in the past.
That has already been put up, we wouldn't do.
And in the, but in the particular situation, hers hasn't been put up.
Because we have not fixed it yet, we will fix it as a part of the standard.
It hasn't been fixed, it's been interim fixed.
Got it.
Yes, it's temporarily fixed for two years.
So you could say anyone that has been struck but not replaced yet?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are we good?
Yeah.
I just, now I'm thinking of the logistics, I mean, do we notify everybody that we've hit the last two years? I mean, playing devil's advocate here.
They would, Corey would price it out and say this is.
It's had been repaired, she was able to get mail the whole time.
Right.
So your mailbox is there, you're getting mail, your paper box does not look good. But to be clear, it was hit, it was repaired, you got your mail. So we repaired it with what we have at the time. Because that's all we could do.
God, we love that.
Don't live in an association.
That is a black pool court.
I'm just kidding, I've been on an association board myself.
Well, and I feel like you got to just change the, I know it sucks and it takes a lot of work, but you got a fence right now in your architectural, a brand name fence that isn't even existing anymore. I know this because I worked with somebody who wanted to get a new fence put in and there's only one brand fence. Well, that's in your architectural documents and you can't even order that fence anymore. So it's like there's other issues too.
The company Delgarde was acquired and the Elba fence that is the replacement was done by the company who acquired Delgarde. And about, it happened probably 10 years ago, was when Delgarde was acquired. Elba became the new standard, blah, 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 and it's the same fence, it's just different.
And we approve it every time.
Yep, it's an approved architecture.
But that's what I mean, as, as a board, you have the power to put out, you know, whatever letters you want to somebody or not. You have the choice to say, we're going to enforce this or not. So I don't know, for me, it's like if you're the board and you have an issue, you don't have an issue necessarily with height of. height of boxes or what they look like or whatever, let people do what they want and decide not to enforce it. I don't know. That's just.
Do you guys have the option to do proxies? Uh, as I mentioned, my experience as a, as a president of an association, um, we had to do that, but we did basically, you get a fifth of the association, you get a fifth of the association, by the next meeting, you need to come in with an endless number of proxies so that we can get something done.
That's how we have annual meetings.
I'm also gonna be honest with you, I like the mailboxes. I like the fact that they don't look ridiculous. Everybody's got their own thing, or they've got some crazy thing on their driveway, but I like our mailboxes.
Yeah, they're nice.
I like the fact that they don't meet the rules and standards of post office and
Yeah.
are difficult to work with, but I like our mailboxes. So as a board member, I don't have a desire to change that.
So I'll play counterpart and I'll play hardcover. This is your rule.
I, I, to be honest, I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. It really doesn't matter to me. It really doesn't matter. It's not a city initiative.
Where are we at as far as unanswered questions? Tom?
Right, we have direction from the council to amend the policy to provide for reimbursement of mailboxes that have been struck. Uh, the council has also indicated that they'd like to amend the policy to say that we will replace struck mailboxes regardless of whether or not they initially met USPS standards. But the init, but we'll only do it once, and any future strikes, if it's reinstalled not to meet USPS standards, we will not replace it. And two, if we're going to do the reimbursement, it has to meet USPS standards.
Is anybody with the city council opposed to that?
No.
That's good then?
Yep.
Excellent.
Yep, and then.
From our perspective, we will send out a letter with the, the changes up, back, and angled.
And we'll provide documentation based on the design that Cory feels is acceptable. And as a city, we'll say this, we feel this meets the terms of our Snow and Ice control policy.
How soon are you doing those letters? And how soon do I have to straighten up my mailbox to make it look nice?
I don't know.
I got time.
I'll send an email tomorrow, no problem.
All right. Stay close to nine. Police department, the preparation.
We need to ask you that if you had specific questions, I would give answers and send it out in a humble update, or we could call you on the phone.
I would just send a shout out to Chief for doing background, or fingerprinting, uh, a team of us for some licensing and more stuff that we do on our own, our organization.
Uh, fire department, there's nothing more to be updated.
Uh, no, we'll be doing, um, interviews for firefighters. We didn't do it last year because there was no classes last year because of COVID. We'll be doing our first hiring now in two years. This end of the month, we'll be having, uh, interviews, so.
Engineering. You're gonna get a PowerPoint or something, aren't you?
No, this is an informal presentation. I only have two items. So it caught my ear when you mentioned we are on the brink of extending pipes out to the freeway. And point of actual fact, we already have a quarter mile of pipe in there. And the other thing is, I am offering you this year, because I can, a choice on your annual stormwater meeting. Remember every year we have the presentation and questions? This year you have the choice to just go online with it. You don't have to have a meeting. You just post some stuff and people can find it there and get to. Thank you. That's all I had.
Media development.
Um, I have two updates the city's received. Formal application for final plat for the second phase of Boulder Heights, and the application, um, or the plat contains forty-five residential lots. It doesn't need to go through planning commission. Will just be reviewed by staff, the city engineer, and, um, the city council approves that. And then, uh, the other thing to note is that this morning, the Dakota Scott Workforce Development Board recognized ten employees of excellence in Scott and Dakota counties, and, um, the Newmarket Bank has been recognized.
Keith, you're great, thank you.
Wow, that's awesome.
No, it was, it was a cool presentation. I, it was Eric Purwinger gave the same presentation, gave a scale of leadership and chaos, and I did a really good job at this as well. Yeah, it was really cool, and I know the bank was extremely talented. Parks, anything be added other than what was in the packet? All right, C C E C?
Meeting is this coming Tuesday. Hot topic of fire rescue days will be discussed then.
All right.
Nope, that's perfect.
Other committee reports? Well, scale, scales, actually tomorrow morning. Scale exact was kinda controversial. I don't know if you wanna get, actually, you know what, rather than getting into that, I have the, I have Tracy's summary of the notes. I'll just send that to you and if you can just send it out, I'll go to the council.
Quick question, is scale live?
Not yet.
Okay, can I get the ZOa?
Yeah, they're, they're putting it on calendar. They're doing like outlook invites. I have it on mine, I'll forward it to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Uh, service delivery?
Uh, Monday.
Uh, unified transit plan steering committee, I.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay, we're in the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're at the point where they're just doing the road show, and then they're gonna look to start up a.
More, more. M B T A.
I made it to the last meeting. It's great. I have no report though.
Uh, I thirty-five.
Uh, we had a meeting this morning. Uh, the big topic, uh, was the website, and that was about it.
All right. Uh, chamber commerce. There's various, the chamber commerce, they wanna make a good one. Discussion by council.
I have one additional report I have. I forgot under administration because I got the look from Linda. Um, there will be more to come on this, but, uh, the county has been looking to ultimately move absentee voting responsibilities back to the cities.
The county has graciously, over the years, they're not required to, uh, handle the responsibilities for absentee and mail-in voting. They will continue to do mail-in voting. However, absentee voting, they're pushing out, especially with the significant increase. Last year was an aberration, but still they've seen regularly increasing trends. It will place a significant resource impact on us one way or another. Um, just to give you an idea, for one election, we have to provide a dedicated, secure room that's staffed by two people forty-six days in advance of the election during our regular business hours on Saturday before and extended hours on the Monday before. We're trying to find ways that we can do that, that will leave it, um, be the most cost-effective and efficient and most compliant way in which to do that. But a lot of the smaller entities in the county are struggling because they just don't have a lot of space to be able to dedicate for that. We're currently exploring some options, and we think we, we think we may have an option, but it means that we have to give up space. Now, last year, that would've meant for a third of the year, we had to take a room and just dedicate it to that purpose.
That's fascinating. That's, that's an unfounded mandate. I mean, there's just so many things wrong with that, it seems like.
Well, but there's a huge push for providing for more access in absentee voting, and there's a growing desire, so it's, it's the trade-off. In the past, we've been able to say, hey, county, could you handle this for us? But it also creates an inconvenience for our residents because in the past, they've had to drive up to Shakopee. Now, in the last election, we worked with them and they actually created a site at their Shakopee, um, pub, or, excuse me, the public works facility close to Jordan. It's more centrally located in the county. Um, but they're ultimately looking by the twenty twenty-four election, by that next presidential election, they basically said, we're not doing it anymore. And that's final. So, uh, it's optional for the twenty twenty-two if you wanna take it on. Uh, the cities that have gone through the transition have said, do not do it during a general election. And Linda's response is, I don't wanna do it for the first time in a general election, so we're trying to find options for twenty twenty-two. So just know that there may be a budget impact in elections for next year. We're currently looking at options. More to come.
All right, discussion by council. Second by Amanda, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.